Well then, thank you all. Good evening, everyone. I'll go ahead and call the committee the whole to order. And we just have one item on our agenda tonight. First time running this since Councilmember Corman could not be here due to him rearranging his schedule for the events today. But hopefully he'll be able to join us for the council meeting later. So our one agenda item is Willowcrest Townhomes Project. And we have a presentation and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Mark Santos Johnson to introduce our speaker.
Thank you, Ryan, and good evening, members of the council. My name is Mark Santos Johnson. I am the Community Development and Housing Manager in the Community in Development, that are in the community development at the city. And it's my great pleasure to introduce and welcome Kathleen Hosfield, who is the Homestead Community Land Trust Executive Director, to our meeting tonight. The city and the Rent and Housing Authority have worked very closely with Kathleen and her team since early 2016 as part of the Sunset Area Transformation Plan. Since homeownership in the Sunset area is only about 33%, compared with 50% for rent citywide, affordable homeownership is a major need and a significant benefit for the community. Kathleen and the Homestead team have done a remarkable job securing resources, designing and building the 12-unit Willowcrest Townhomes. We are thrilled to have Kathleen here tonight to share more information about the project, which is almost complete. Kathleen?
Thank you so much, Mark. I'm gonna try to share my screen here. It's a pleasure and an honor to be with you and and to have the opportunity to share this great update with you about our project. And as we do that, I wanted to just take a moment and acknowledge that we are building homes on the unceded, occupied ancestral lands of the Coast Salish people. And their ancient heritage of includes stewarding, protecting, and caring for the waterways that we call home. So we're excited about what's happening at Willowcrest. I'm going to be going over the homes themselves, our construction process, what it means to be a community land trust home, and the background of community land trust homeownership. So this is an artist rendering from the beginning of the project. Where now the homes are actually taking shape and not quite as green as depicted here on the construction site, but nonetheless beautiful. The Willowcrest Townhomes are located behind the Glenwood Avenue Townhomes off of Glenwood, between Glenwood and Edmonds. And there, the Rent and Housing Authority contributed the land for this parcel, for this development, rather. And they, the parcel actually fronts on Edmonds, but we're developing a slice that's between the two streets currently. This is a very special project. Not only is it affordable homeownership for people who would otherwise be shut out of homeownership due to high costs in King County, but it is also a highly environmentally sustainable development. It is the first of permanently affordable development of its size, built with the features that it has that significantly reduce utilities costs and climate impacts. As I mentioned, it's built on land that was contributed by the Rent and Housing Authority. These will be 12 three- and four-bedroom townhomes that achieve net zero energy usage through very highly efficient systems and construction and the use of solar panels for onsite energy generation. In addition to the land contribution by the Rent and Housing Authority, we are so grateful to the city's contribution, $25,000 for the housing opportunity from Housing Opportune Fund grant, and a $332,000 green building grant. So it was your contribution that made this deeply deep green development possible. And we are so grateful to be partnering with you on establishing this demonstration project as what we like to call a demonstration of something that benefits the climate but also reduces the total cost of homeownership. We believe that the investments in the energy efficiency and also stormwater management actually will reduce our homeowners' monthly utilities costs and thereby make these homes even more affordable than would otherwise be so. We have had a number of partners in the financing of this project, including JP Morgan Chase, who contributed a grant at the very beginning that enabled our staff to work with the Rent and Housing Authority to locate this property and then develop it into the project that we'll see today. The Edwards Mother Earth Foundation contributed money for the green features. King County's regular housing financed through the transit-oriented development funding. Also, King County Water Works grant paid for the exemplary stormwater management techniques that we've used. Washington State Housing Trust Fund, Community Frameworks, which is the distributor of HUD shop funds, and the Federal Home Loan Bank. This is a very complicated funding stack for a project, in part because of its deep green features. And a good 50% or slightly more than that will be paid for by homeowners' own mortgages. So it's really a social entrepreneurship model that leverages our homeowner's ability to pay for their housing and thus leverages the public investment in the homes as well. Here's a site map of the homes. To your right is Glenwood Avenue and the Glenwood Townhomes. And there's a place structure that the Glenwood Townhomes and the Willowcrest Homes will share, a new place structure that's going in shortly. You can see there are three clusters of buildings, four units in each. The architectural design for this is really lovely because they are designed for neighborly interactions. But they're also designed for giving each homeowner a sense of privacy and private entrance. You'll notice, you can see the word "entry." You can see that the entry for each unit is on a different side of the building. So unlike sort of that little boxes on the hillside kind of idea of of people going up their stair steps and lockstep to open their front door, all of these homes have separate entrances that gives them a sense of being their own unique residence. And the investments in energy efficiency mean a lot of additional insulation in the buildings. So they're going to be a lot quieter. You will be able to forget that you share a wall with another household because there will not be the same noise dispersment throughout the building. So, and you can see that there's walkways that allow people to interact with each other throughout the space. And the walkway that goes to the place structure is something that will unite all of the homes in this area. So as I mentioned, they're three- and four-bedroom homes, three-story homes. The three bedrooms are 1,200 square feet and the four bedrooms are 1,400 square feet. They have two bathrooms, one car garage. They have an open concept floor plan. And there are balconies off the kitchen, which gives some additional livable space. And some of the units will have views. You can see in this picture of Mount Rainier. That's not hypothetical. That's actually from the second floor of one of the homes in A building. That was in, oh, I would say October of last year. The size of the homes is important to us in the current environment because, as you may know, the rental housing, which there are many rental housing developers in King County, they tend to build one, twos, studios, ones and two bedrooms. And one of the things that we've heard a lot is that families don't have places for larger households. So in this first phase of the Willowcrest development, we've been emphasizing the three- and four-bedroom homes for larger families. When we developed the second phase of Willowcrest on the rest of the land that's available, we may have some smaller units, but we're still maintaining that focus on households that have multiple household members. So we've got, as I mentioned, solar panels, Energy Star appliances, water sensors, water features, ductless mini-split heating/cooling system, very high-energy-efficient heat pump water heater, and the water sensor low-flow fixtures to conserve water. Most of the homes will be priced within the range of $310,000 to $315,000, which is affordable to households making 65% to 70% area median income. And I'll explain in precise terms how much that is in a minute. Three of the homes will be priced affordably for those who meet the following criteria, though. They will have an income of 60% or below area median income and also have been qualified by an agency to be housing unstable or homeless. And I have just been talking to a private donor who may be contributing an additional $25,000 to two of these homes, which would effectively lower the income level that could qualify for these homes even further, which would be a wonderful thing. So keep your fingers crossed that that will be how that works out. So in our program, we serve people who earn less than 80% of area median income as defined by HUD for our region. And the numbers that you see on your screen now, which are on our website and also on the Willowcrest Townhomes website, are the upper limit in that 80% category. We do not price our homes right at 80 because that then becomes very difficult to find people who are right at 80. We price much lower than that to create a lot of room above and below the price point for people to qualify. Examples of what these incomes mean are 60% AMI. A three-person household would be making about $64,000. A four-person household in the range of $71,000 or $72,000 if you want to round up. The 70% AMI, which is kind of the upper limit of what we expect people who buy from these homes, is $75,000 for a three-person household and $83,000 for a four-person household. So that just gives you a sense of exactly how much it means to be in those percentage categories. So I'm gonna move on to explaining what it means to be a community land trust home. And then we'll get into a construction update in a minute and see some of the current photos. So, community land trust homeownership, how is that different from other homeownership programs? There's two aspects of that. One is permanent affordability. So the public investment at the first sale sets the affordable price of each home. But future prices are controlled through agreements with our buyers. So when someone purchases a home through our program, they purchase the improvements on the land, the home itself. They do not purchase the land. And they lease the land from us for a small monthly fee. The ground lease or covenant on the home spells out a formula that is the rate at which the home can appreciate now. The home appreciates at a rate that allows folks to earn equity, develop a nest egg, but also keeps the price of the home affordable to future buyers. That's what we mean by permanent affordability. Community land trust homeownership also offers a democratic community governance, where we center the voices of those who benefit from the homes and land in our governance through Homestead membership. So every homeowner in our program is a member of Homestead and a partner with us in stewarding the land and the public investments in our homes. And they also have democratic voice in the local governance of their own development through homeowners associations or community associations. So Willowcrest will take part in democratic governance in both Homestead, but also in their local homeowners association. So community land trusts are defined in the federal statute. They are membership-based nonprofit organizations. We acquire and use land to benefit low and moderate-income neighborhoods. The definition of a community land trust is in the Gonzales-Cranston Community Housing Statute, designed to emphasize community-based models for housing development. The community land trust model is super flexible and can be adapted to a variety of uses where there's a desire to retain control of land, so to remove it permanently from the speculative market. But we focus on homeownership because there are so few organizations in King County that are working on affordable homeownership. We have lots of great rental housing organizations and great, you know, city housing authorities that do rental housing. We need more homes for ownership and that's why that's our focus. We often think it's helpful to just remind people that there is a housing continuum and that there are different types of housing that meet different income categories. This is a chart from the 2017 King County Affordable Housing Task Force presentation that established what those different income levels are. That 0% to 30% AMI, that's your shelter and your rental housing for very low or no income folks. That 30% to 50% AMI, that's your traditional rental housing. On the low end of that spectrum, you'll have very high need for wraparound services to stabilize people and keep moving them upward in economic mobility. As you approach that fifth, upper limit of the 50% AMI, fewer and fewer services are needed. And then you enter into our category, which is that 50% to 80% AMI, where there's some rental and sometimes it's developed by for-profit entities rather than non-profit entities. But in this category, homeownership becomes a very attractive solution for municipalities because it does leverage the homeowner's ability to pay and thereby makes it an efficient use of public dollars. The permanent affordability of our homes also is an investment in the long-term use of public funds because a one-time investment in our homes actually serves about seven buyers over time without reinvestment. So we expect that about seven people will, seven households will own the same home over a period of about 50 years. So it's, I think it's overstating it to call it one and done, but it's very close to that. This is an important income category to serve because it does represent about 17% of King County residents, of which 44% are cost burdened or extremely cost burdened by their housing. So we have noted that there's a need for a significant number of new affordable homes, homeownership specifically for this income category. And our efforts are intended to scale production to meet that need. Community land trusts have a really proud heritage in the civil rights era. They were conceived in Albany, Georgia by Charles and Shirley Sherrod, the late Representative John Lewis, and Slater King, who was this cousin of Martin Luther King Jr. They were on the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee and were seeking to help Black sharecroppers register to vote. What happened when they did that, if you know the South back in the day, at that time, there could be 75% population of black population in an area and only 2% black voting registrations. So that was the issue that they were addressing. So they were encouraging people to register to vote. And when that happened, all these sharecroppers were thrown off their land and had nowhere to live and had no way to make a living. So Charles Sherrod, who was pastor, put on his big-boy pants and went out and raised tons of money. And they bought 6,000 acres in, just outside of Albany, Georgia. And they created the first community land trust called New Communities. And it was to be primarily farmland, but also homes and businesses. And so they created the model that we use today, which is the separation of the land, the title of the land, from the improvements on the land, whether that be farm buildings or businesses or homes. They also created that member governance structure. And that's a really important piece that we emphasize when we talk about community land trusts because the traditional charity model is of people of means doing good for, on behalf of people who are perceived to have fewer means. But in this model, everyone is on an equal footing in furtherance of this model through membership in the community land trust. Important, as we're all increasing our awareness of the ways we can increase the social and racial justice impacts of what we're doing to recognize that those types of models speak to that issue. So we came to this and it's no surprise to you that our work seeks to address this egregious gap between people's incomes and what homes cost. Back in 2014, this orange or reddish line, depending on how it's showing up on your screen, that was the median home price, $462,000. That's in King County. And then a price that was affordable to a median-income household, a 100% area median income, was, you know, $70,000 less than that. But for this gray line, this is a modest-income household, the kind of folks we serve. And you can see that the price even back in 2014 was $220,000 different. Then five years pass and that gap between even what's affordable to a median-income household on average has widened and it's only gotten worse for those we serve. So home prices have increased about 46% on average around the county. And they say that incomes have increased 23%. That's only according to HUD. In real terms, of course, I don't know anybody whose income has increased 23%, do you? We think that this is primarily just the skewing upward of the income numbers due to an influx of highly-paid, high-tech workers, high-tech and biotech. So the home prices have gotten bad for the people we serve, but they're also not great for everybody else. The community land trust model also is, represents an anti-displacement strategy that is working. This is another one of those really important conversations to have in the light of our awareness of racial justice and housing inequities that have impacted minorities in particular. So, community land trusts, when communities and membership organizations own land together, that is a bulwark against the displacement, especially the wholesale displacement of entire class or income category of people. And you can see, this is the Puget Sound Regional Council displacement map. You can see that the Sunset neighborhood is one of those. And so we believe that Willowcrest is a great anti-displacement strategy for the Sunset neighborhood and will create a permanent affordability for the people who are modest incomes forever. This will give them, give affordability, I like to say, give affordability a permanent address in the Sunset neighborhood. So specifically, what Homestead does is we build new construction or we rehab existing homes. We go out and we fundraise to subsidize the price of each home to what is affordable. And then we split the title at the sale, the first sale. And the land is held in trust by Homestead and stewarded by the members collectively. And the owners lease the land for a small monthly fee. And then they agree through their ground lease or covenant to sell the home at the time of their choosing at a formula price that allows them to build equity, but also allows them to sell the home to the next income-qualified household at an affordable price. That formula, by the way, right now is 1.5% compounded annually. And I don't think I included in my slides, but that allows, at current prices, it allows someone to build equity at a rate of about $35,000 for every five years you own the home, which, you know, is not the same as a market rate windfall. But for someone whose only other alternative is renting, it's a great way to build a nest egg towards whatever you would like to direct that money towards. Here's another way to say what I just said. So community land trust homeownership subsidizes that initial price of the home and controls the future cost increase through agreements with our buyers. The buyers purchase the land. And removing the land is part of what makes the home affordable. But it's not the whole story. In many cases, we are subsidizing a significant part of the cost of construction as well. So land is owned collectively through Homestead. The ground lease or covenant is typically a 99-year renewable and inheritable document that spells out the responsibilities of the owner and the amount of the ground lease fee. And it contains that resale formula. So everyone knows at the beginning what the resale formula is going to be. That doesn't change for the person over time. It's not changed. It's just the fee that you buy in with. So, community ownership and governance is a really important part of community land trust homeownership. A third of the board are our own homeowners. It's a really important aspect of being a community land trust that's also in the federal definition. So we have a third of our homeowners are on the board. And another two-thirds of our board are community advocates. And the members elect the board and they elect the officers of the board. And the board oversees me and I oversee the staff. These are some of the statistics of our program. We have 220 homes in trust currently. We've sold, resold 52 of those homes. So 25% of our trust has turned over at least once. And as a result, we've served, we've created first-time home buying opportunities for 272 households. We have a 55% minority ownership rate, which compares to a 26% minority ownership rate in all of King County. We have a pipeline of, Willowcrest is part of this 33 affordable homes in development. We have a pipeline of another 100 affordable homes. And through an agreement with the Taylor Morrison Homes as part of a density bonus granted by the City of as part of a density bonus granted by the City of Renton for the Arlington Village Development, we are, uh, bringing seven homes from Arlington Village into trust. Most of our homes are townhomes or condominiums that built for density. That's an economic rather than a philosophical, um, choice. And we do have the, um, uh, the majority of our homes are twos and three-bedroom homes, uh, with some fours and a, a couple of, um, much larger homes as well. So, uh, uh, construction update. You may know that we broke ground in the fall of twenty nineteen, but construction didn't actually start until March of, uh, twenty twenty. We achieved fifty percent completion in October and we're, uh, approaching construction completion now. Uh, we, um, laid down some asphalt on the driveways this, uh, just this last week. Got lucky with some weather. And we will be, um, getting, we hope, a temporary certificate of occupancy in the first couple of weeks of April with, um, certificate of occupancy, occupancy in May. So here's what they looked like last week before the pavement was, was, uh, was laid down. You can see, uh, that a beautiful blue from the rendering has been faithfully reproduced. And you can see the, the tilt in the, um, roofs. That's, uh, orienting them for the solar panels. This is a, a picture of, of, um, one of the kitchens. This is the second floor of, uh, a unit. And you can see where this cardboard box is. That's where the refrigerator will go. I'm going to, and you can see the door onto the, um, balcony, which doesn't have a handle yet, so, uh, definitely not finished. But here's another view into the kitchen. This is a really interesting aspect of the energy efficiency features. The, um, you may know that refrigerators send off a lot of heat. And so we have positioned the water heater and the refrigerator close to each other so that the heat from the, uh, refrigerator can be captured in the, um, in the hot water system, um, which makes it incredibly energy efficient. In terms of our sales process, um, oops, um, we will be, um, starting it with information sessions late this month, March thirty-first. We've had public information sessions about Willowcrest starting in December, uh, and going through the first of March. But, um, now we'll be offering some sessions to guide people on how they can apply for the homes. We will have a, uh, model unit set up in early April and we will shoot a three-dimensional virtual tour. It's a technique that a lot of folks were using during COVID. We find it's, it's not only a great way to, um, cut down on the number of in-person tours, but it's also kind of fun to have a three-D model of your home. So we'll be, uh, posting that as soon as we have the modeling unit ready. And, uh, then we will, um, qualify people to, uh, tour, um, in person, starting in mid to late April. And, uh, just, uh, so that you are aware, our, our program participants go through a lot of training, um, and lots of public meetings in terms of learning about what does it mean to own a community land trust home. And in this case, we'll be doing information sessions to get them ready to be part of a, an HOA as well. So there is a, a website set up for, um, Willowcrest. It's, uh, willowcresttownhomes.com. There's lots of information, um, floor plans, the site plan, information about the neighborhood, um, additional information about what it means to be a community land trust home. And the income limits and how to apply are, uh, at the available tab. And then, um, event information like, um, um, getting information about the upcoming how-to-apply, uh, events is on the, it's actually called news now, I believe. Changed the, it doesn't say blog anymore, it says news. So, so that's the end of my presentation. I'm, uh, would love to answer your questions about all this.
Thank you so much, Kathleen. Great presentation. Really loved seeing the Affordable Housing Task Force, uh, data that I was, I was proud to be a part of that task force and to see that being put to work. So much, so much data and unpack here. I'm sure we have a couple of questions from folks. I'm gonna see if I can, see if we have any hands raised. Might we be able to, unless we want to stay on the slide, go back to the screen where you can see everyone?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right. Do we have any questions? Feedback, comments? I'll say, I have a few if not, so why don't I get us started? So, one, I can't, I can't start by saying how much I love this project and how much the need for affordable homeownership was. The slides you pulled out from, uh, the Affordable Housing Task Force, that was certainly an area that, you know, I, I felt was important because I know, as you said, this is part of the equity work. This is part of, uh, wealth-building opportunities, uh, for, for, uh, for folks who haven't had access to those previously. So, um, very happy to see that highlighted in the presentation. A couple of questions stemming from that, knowing some of the other barriers into access. How about down payments? That was one thing I don't know if I heard. Is that something that would still be at the same requirement as, as it would be for a normal, um, market rate house?
No, in, in our model, um, we only require one percent down. So, um, you know, between twenty-five hundred and three thousand dollars is the typical down payment. You know, one, one of the things you find with, um, commercial lenders, and we work with, uh, regular lenders, um, they're often looking for a down payment, that changes the, um, loan-to-value ratio. But in, in our, um, homes, the home itself and the land is already, that the subsidy that's in the home, um, already is, um, establishes that loan-to-value ratio. So we can keep our, our down payment, um, that's paid by the buyer, uh, to be very low.
Um, and then the, the other question I had, I'm assuming, uh, they, they would require owner occupancy?
Yes, yes, we do require that this be the person's primary residence. And all, and we can allow people to, um, rent out a room now again, um, or have a roommate, but they must continue to live in the home. That's part of the spirit and intent of, of the model is to create first-time home buying opportunities for people. You don't want them buying this and then going on and buying something else and keeping this as an investment piece, right?
Yeah. Uh, looks like Councilmember Van has a question.
Thank you, Councilwoman McGurven. And thank you so much, Kathleen, for your presentation, very thorough. I, I love the, the pictures and breakdown. Very much appreciated this and the, the land trust, um, program that you have. I do have a question regarding the homer, um, homeowner diversity. Do you have more disaggregated datas, uh, or these are the, the data that we have? Like within the Asian community or the, um, black or African-American community? Do we have breakdown of, uh, particular ethnicities?
I don't think we, um, I don't think we have that. We ask pretty simple, um, self-identifying categories when people apply. We're, our, our system, this might be getting a little too technical, but we have a system that rolls up to a national, uh, database with, um, the Grounded Solutions Network, all the other community land trusts across the nation. And so we agree on a set of, um, uh, identifiers, um, that people apply for so that we can aggregate our data. So I don't think we break it down into subcategories.
Great question. And I had a question kind of along similar lines, um, uh, with respect to, so the fact that they're permanently affordable is, is a hundred percent what makes it work. I mean, I, that's, it would not work at all to do all this work and then have it go back and get sold at, back at market rate again. Knowing that there would be a price cap on resale, my question would be, um, what other efforts, since there can't be a bidding war essentially, what other efforts would be made? And how would you ensure fair housing laws are followed?
Yeah, great, thanks, great question. So we, um, we use a tie-breaking system. We, we do have competition for these homes. Often as many as two to three families will want, um, a single home and we expect, uh, to have a fair amount of competition for, um, the homes in, uh, at Willowcrest. We do have fair housing tie-breaking system. It starts with income qualification. It includes, um, aspects like, um, uh, ties to the area. Have you been displaced from the area? Household size fit for the number of bedrooms? For example, we don't necessarily want to sell a, um, four-bedroom home to a one-person household when, you know, when, um, households, larger households are in need of, um, larger homes. So, um, uh, also whether somebody fits that homeless, um, definition or housing unstable definition, uh, will, um, increase someone's chances of winning the tie-breaking. We will be publishing the tie-breaking, um, criteria when we do our information sessions on how to apply. So people will have some specifics about what that tie-breaking system is. If, if we still at the end of the day have, um, people tied, then we, um, we just use a lottery, a random selection to choose between equally qualified candidates.
Great, thank you. I, I don't know that I have any more questions per se, uh, just certainly a comment, but I want to make sure I give to anyone else who has, who has, uh, any feedback before we, uh, as we are coming up around our six forty-five mark, we'd want to adjourn by, but I want to make sure I give others the opportunity to provide input if you should have any. But if you don't, because, uh, Kathleen was so thorough in her presentation, that's totally all right too. The, 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 the two last things I'd say, one is, uh, Councilmember Corman wanted me to, though he couldn't be here today, wanted to, uh, me to express his full support for this project and that he's really excited about it, uh, perhaps almost as much as I am. The, the, the question, I guess, um, you know, to me, it's just the scale and size. Like I'm, I'm hoping and I'm looking to Mark a little bit on this, that they, you mentioned Arlington, that we, this is something we can duplicate more and more, certainly in Renton, but, but elsewhere. It sounds like you guys have a fair number of projects lined up, um, in the queue, which is great to hear. So, uh, let's, let's definitely see, see more of this. I know, uh, for, for, uh, my family, you know, and we, we were, had the very good fortune of being able to buy a townhome at a very good time in the market. If we hadn't bought then, I, I think, you know, um, we would have certainly not, we were certainly met some challenges, certainly ended finding affordable options. So, uh, great to, to see that this, that we're doing this so that people can, can access. It really was, I guess, the, the, the two types of equity we're looking at here, um, in terms of what we can get as outcomes, so. Yeah, I have, uh, no other questions, feedbacks. So, um, I want to thank you both, uh, thank you for the presentation, thank you, Mark.
And thank you. Thank you for your support of this project. It's, it's literally taken a village to get this, um, to the place that it is and we wouldn't be here without your contributions and support. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. All right, well, um, this was our one and only agenda item today. So, um, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the committee hall and we'll see you back here at seven PM for our regular council meeting. And I believe Councilmember Corman will be back at that time. If not, I'll, I will carry on. Thanks.